For town council are recorded. So if you participate in the calls, you're giving permission to be recorded. Just want to remind everybody of that. Also would like to remind everybody that there's only one item on the agenda tonight. And so we'll limit our discussion to that. If you have other things that you want to discuss with the town council beyond the fireworks discussion, we will certainly put you on the agenda for another time. I know we also have a lot of people on the call and we truly do want to hear from anyone who wants to speak on this issue. But we, being in an environment of a Zoom call makes it a little bit difficult. So we also want to be cognizant of giving people a fair chance to voice their opinions, not cut people each other off. So we will try to call on you specifically when we know the name or phone number. But if not, you certainly can chime in. If Jonathan mutes you, it's because somebody else is talking. We do prefer that people keep their phone on mute until the time that they speak so we don't hear all the background noise and so the council members can also hear everything. With that said, I just wanted to give the council members some background. As you all know, we met on Tuesday of last week at a regular council meeting and Jonathan brought the fireworks up in his town manager report. And we talked about it and came to a conclusion after some discussion that we would suggest to the chamber either moving the date of the fireworks out or reconsidering having them all together. At the time, nobody on that call was representing the group organizing that. So we didn't hear from those folks or anyone who had donated to this particular cause. So once Jonathan reached out to the chamber members to explain what occurred at our meeting, they asked to have a meeting as well to voice their concerns and also why they wanted to do this event. So I asked Jonathan to schedule that for last Friday and because of a lack of time for advertising and everything else, we decided to, the two of us would meet with him, but we also asked Mr. Githens as vice president of council to join that. So we did have that meeting and the chamber presented their position and their views about the fireworks. We felt that they had some valid reasons for wanting to do fireworks. And also they didn't realize that they would need to fill out a special event permit form, which was one of the things we discussed. So they asked if they did fill that out and address some concerns that we expressed to them, could they present that to council and have a chance to be heard by the council? And we said, yes, that would be possible. Hence, we called the special meeting. The only reason I didn't want to wait till next week, and I think Mr. Githens and Jonathan agreed, is because there is some timeliness to what the chamber is trying to do. And they didn't want to stop a moving train or move ahead without coming together with the town and having a conversation about it. So we thought there was some urgency and that's why we decided to have a special meeting. So any questions from the council about this update so far?
Not here.
Okay?
No, not here.
All right. So what I'd like to do then is go ahead and move forward and start by hearing from some of the members of the chamber so that they can express their desires in this special event permit, why and what's involved with that. And then we'll open it up to other folks who want to weigh in on this as well. So anyone from the chamber who wanted to get this started for us, could you go ahead and speak up?
Jenny, council, this is Elizabeth, president of the chamber. When this was, this idea first came in front of my board and I, we talked about having a lake fest weekend. I've explained this quite a few times, but for the people that haven't gotten this information at that point, the board was, my board was very concerned about that because of the normal amount of people that come into town. And so seeing that we want to do this for the town of Culver and just for morale builder, pretty much to celebrate our country and definitely our state opening back up, July 4th is when our governor opens our state back up. We decided that the 4th of July would be the best time. The, at that time, we were aware that the academy was still planning to have their fire. I also know that's been questioned, but that's been cleared up. And so we went forward. You mentioned the special permit and I guess we didn't intentionally look at, you know, like look past that, but it did happen just because we knew the fireworks would be taking place on the lake and that's not the jurisdiction of the town. We do appreciate you allowing us to submit that. When you originally had the meeting, I wasn't aware to be on the call. Rose, I had been there, Rose has worked really hard with a lot of people, tried to pull this together. We had already started to consider the amount of extra traffic potentially, but not for sure that could happen and had started to think about getting people in line to help facilitate that. We weren't able to tell any of the council that or anybody that was at the meeting that night. We've worked on putting signs together for social distancing and to remind people of that in the park and also at the beach area. That goes back though, knowing that the governor had planned to open the, open to stage five on 4th of July. You know, even though those are suggested guidelines, we still, of course, would always want Culver to be safe. I mean, we're the Chamber of Commerce, we care about business, we care about Culver. A lot of us spend a lot of time trying to make Culver better. We would never ever want to put Culver in a situation where we thought that it wasn't preferred. I can say personally that I know, because I've received a lot of donations from town people. I know that there's been a lot of talk about how this is just about the lake people, just about the lake people. And even if it is, so be it. They own property here and they are Culver, but that's not true. There, I've been a lot of people that have stepped up and donated what they think is feasible, some $25, some $50. Town people, people that are here all year long, that are excited for Culver and enthusiasm to return. Rose?
Elizabeth, did we lose you there for a minute?
Yeah, I was gonna say, was that me or did she?
I, I'm, I'm not sure. Am I back? Maybe I bumped the phone?
Yeah, you're back.
Okay, okay, good. Rose has a lot more of the details as far as working with the DNR and the, getting the permits and things there. She has done this for the lake festival. She, you know, ran that and she has taken care of all of those things. So I'll let her, you know, tell about having those things in order. Yeah, we just never really saw this going this way. Never ever would any of us on my board or even on, I mean, obviously I'm on Main Street and, you know, all the merchants are Main Street, think it's a fantastic idea. Do they think that their sales are gonna skyrocket? No, absolutely not. But just kind of a deep breath and just bring wow, just to make Culver come back to life again. Many of you may not know, but Sean and I own a snow removal company and I guess you're wondering why I'm making reference to that. But, you know, our job is to protect people that decide to travel out to snow and ice. And by that, you take precautionary measures, you clean parking lots, sidewalks, and you salt them. And that's the same thing with COVID. When people travel out, if they don't feel comfortable, they take precautions. We see masks on the people that have higher concerns than others. And, you know, I, I kind of compare it to a snowstorm. If you're not comfortable and driving on snowy roads, then, you know, you, you stay home. And I'm, I'm not trying to tell people to stay in their homes, but if you're not comfortable, then, you know, that's, that's where we stay. And any kind of situation where, you know, we, we feel there's danger, other than that, you take precautionary measures. And that's what the chamber has put in place as far as signage and also knowing that we would have to up the officers that would be patrolling in the park and also the beach. That's, Rose, are you on the call and would you like to talk about your involvement with the DNR and the permit, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I submitted DNR permit and I actually got a phone call today from Arthur Jackson, just verifying more information. He did question me about multiple calls they have been getting in regard to the fireworks. And he just asked me to explain what that was all about. So I did explain that there were concerns for COVID and mask gatherings in our park that we were addressing tonight at our meeting, that we had got a special event application. And, I mean, he honestly was not concerned. He did say that in 14 years of him doing that job, he's never had anyone call him about an event before. So it was, it was new to him as well. But, I mean, everything, we've done everything. We've done the process correctly. We've been in contact with who we've needed to be in contact with as far as the academy, the DNR. So yeah, I mean, filling out the special event permit was, if that's something that we needed to do, we were happy to do that because we do want to work with the town and just make sure that everyone is safe. And if we need to, we, we've hired, totally been about hiring the sheriff's posse to kind of keep things, keep things safe in the park as far as social distancing and people off of peers so that people who are in the park messing with private property on BODs and that sort of thing.
Thank you, Rose.
Jenny?
Yes.
Bill Clever, may I interrupt a second? Could someone kind of capsulize, Rose, could you just kind of summarize again what you said? It sounded like you were either on a speakerphone or you were difficult to understand, at least on my end. Can you, just someone summarize what she said?
Sure, I'll, I'll do that. And Rose, please interject if I didn't hear you properly. I could hear you fairly well. Rose explained that they've done the DNR permit and the guy at DNR had called her and said that he had received some calls from people asking questions about this event or expressing concerns. But they have also filled out the special event form and talked to Wayne about hiring a police posse, which would be there for security, to keep people off the piers, for crowd control, and to try to keep people social distanced. Either Rose or Elizabeth, I think, said that they've created some signs to remind people to social distance. And then was, I think, Rose, I've summarized pretty much what you said?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Jenny. Thank you very much.
Sure, you're welcome. Anyone else from the chamber who would like to speak before I take some council questions, if there are any? Okay, Rose and Elizabeth, do you guys have anything else for now?
Yes, I think it's important to know that Wayne made the suggestion based off of what he knew security worked for Lake Festival, which obviously we won't have that kind of turnout. Communities around us are still having their fireworks. Of course, people will have them in their own backyards. Family picnics will still be attended. So we know that, or feel very confident that we won't have the turnout as that of Lake Fest. But based on concerns and on the, what's going on in the world, Wayne suggested that eight officers for a four hour period is what he thought would be fit for a situation as such, which is in line with the normal suggestion for Lake Fest. So we will have plenty of people on hand for that social distancing, just to look over the beach, the piers, the park, and potentially to move traffic if needed.
One of the questions that somebody put in the chat session is what the calls to DNR were. Rose, can you share it all? Did he just say that you're getting calls that people don't want this because of COVID? Or what, what those concerns were about? Somebody's asking that question in the chat room.
He didn't mention specifically. He just said that there have been multiple calls in DNR and he was more concerned for me getting to him, kind of side regardless of what the calls were about, just to make sure everything aligned, assuming?
And I also, council, I also had reports from the DNR office that not all the calls were complaints, but there was also calls that were in support as well because they had heard the buzz around town and were, that they were, there was positive calls as well.
Okay. All right. Anyone else from chamber who wants to speak or any of the business owners who may want to weigh in? I don't know who all is on the call. I can see some of your names and for some of you, I just see phone numbers.
Jenny, this is Angie from Legacy.
Yes. Hey, Angie.
Hi. I have had several clients and that I've sent down to actually speak with Elizabeth that actually wanted to give donations and they were local, everyday, ordinary people. You know, I see, I think we've probably seen approximately a little over 100 people already this week that have come in and out of the business since Saturday. And majority are 100% in favor for it. They do agree that, you know, people need to take their own personal precautions. But I personally, in the business, have not had a negative comment about the fireworks. We've had more people wanting to know about where can they go donate, how do they, you know, help make this happen? And I think, you know, once again, I wrote a letter in, I know, and, and I said, I think it would be a very nice boost for the community to at least have something for the children in the community to look forward to. Because that has been a hard piece for the town, the kids don't understand. I think it would be a nice family thing for them to do if they social distance with their families, which we as the chamber encourage. And once again, all I've heard is more positive about it than negative. So that's my take.
Okay. Thanks, Angie. Any other business owners or people related to the chamber who want to speak on this?
Hi, Jenny, this is Becky Furry and I wanted to chime in a little bit too. So my background, before I came to Culver, was as a pediatric nurse practitioner for the National Institutes of Allergy and Infectious Diseases. And I, when we look at our numbers here, they're very small. We know a lot more about this than we knew months ago. Every day, you know, things are opening up in our state. And yes, we're seeing rising numbers in this area, but we kind of do expect that as time goes on. It's not going away. We're gonna see numbers and these numbers that we're seeing still go back to March when we started testing. Yes, there's a climb recently, but it's kind of isolated in certain areas. And so with fireworks, it's one of those where everybody's gonna be outside. It's one of the least risky kind of activities where you're with your family anyways, which we're encouraging that kind of social bubbling within who we, we spend our time with. We will see, you know, it's a 4th of July is a family tradition kind of time. People are gonna be outside. They're not, you don't have to go and sit next to other people. We're not piling people in next to each other. We can encourage people to wear masks, social distance, do the things that they're supposed to do. But at the end of the day, this isn't, it's not gonna go away and stop all of our life here if, doesn't make sense.
Okay, to continue the conversation, I, at some point, I am gonna want to hear from our employees as well. So I know some of you are on the call and we'll get to that as soon as possible, I promise you. I know many of you want to be eating dinner or taking your night off. So next, is there anyone on the call who has a contradictory point of view to this point of view? Like who, we, we heard from some people who, who thought this was not a good idea at the council meeting. Does anyone want to speak to that or speak to any other viewpoint on this matter?
Hi, Jenny, this is Don Fox.
Hi, Don.
Yeah, just in case some of the council members did not check their email, I put my thoughts in writing for this afternoon. I remain concerned, highly concerned about this. As I said in the letter, along with the hundreds of people that are gonna be in the park on the 4th of July if this event goes forward, COVID is gonna be there too. I would think that, you know, once in a century, we could suspend the 4th of July fireworks in order to try and keep everybody as safe as possible. So I would just urge the council not to approve this request, not because I'm not patriotic. I served in my country for 31 years. But I think that the greater duty that we owe our citizenry is to keep them as safe as possible. It's not just about personal responsibility because we see people walking around every day and more and more of them without masks. We also know that at least a third of the people who are COVID positive aren't symptomatic and so don't even know that they, they have the virus. So I don't know why we would not take as many precautions as we could, particularly when this is being billed as the biggest fireworks celebration we have seen on the lake. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Don. Anyone else who wants to unmute and speak? Who isn't a council member or employee? Okay, next. Oh, yes, sorry.
I'm sorry. Did you want to go through, it's Lee Marshall, did you want to go through the council stuff and then ask for feedback from the public? You were looking for people who are going to be anti the fireworks, am I, am I understanding you correctly?
I'm just looking for any point of view, to be honest with you. Anyone who wants to speak on it is, is totally okay.
Okay, then can I just add some of my thoughts?
Sure, absolutely.
I just want to say very much for the fireworks, we've done this for decades. I think in this particular case, we probably know two things. One, there are probably going to be much fewer people than, than we would normally see at a celebration. And I, it's my feeling that we have probably 10 times the amount of space we normally do. The academy has come out as neutral about the fireworks. When I was a kid, we used to go over and put blankets on the parade ground and watch the fireworks where people could stand at their shoreline, they're, it could be at the hillside over at the woodcraft camp. I mean, there are tons of places to watch. Our neighbor is a cardiologist and I was listening to Becky Furry, who I don't know, but he sent an article that was saying that even in Wuhan, China, where COVID started, that there was only one instance where a number of people were infected being outside, that all the large infections were, say, one person or 10 people infected, other people were all inside. So I agree with her that as regards this particular disease, being outside is a benefit. To me, I just don't see enough reasons to, to cancel. And, and, and just one final comment, I just really appreciate that you guys did this, this redo. I was disturbed by the last council meeting when the fireworks weren't on the agenda. You know, some people seem to know about, about them, but when I watched the recording of the meeting, it was just such an adversarial, you know, we have to cut them off at the DNR and cut them off at the academy and cut them off at the marina and send a letter saying they need to pay us money. And, and I kept thinking to myself, my God, they're, they're our chamber, they're our local businesses, they're not, you know, adversaries in a court of law. And, and I do understand that, that official letters have to be written, but I'm really glad you guys had, have had this rehearing. You know, even if you don't change your mind, it's important that there be a fair process for, for how you make up your mind in, in the first place. So anyway, I'm team fireworks and thanks for letting me make the comment.
Okay, thank you, Lee. And just so you know, the, the agenda came out before the fireworks came to our attention and it, I guess it hit TGL and then council members were asked to take a position. I was asked to take a position on it before we even had a council meeting.
You got the speaker on?
Look at me.
And so I didn't feel that as president of council, I could make a statement on that without a council discussion. So Jonathan put it in his town manager's report because by then it was too late for the agenda. So I just wanted to let you know how that evolved and ended up discussed at the meeting. Somebody probably needs to mute their phone because I'm hearing background noise.
I'm kidding.
Anyone else who wants to weigh in before we talk to the employees and council members? I'm hearing a burp.
Hey, Jenny Gil, does anyone from council have any, does anyone from council have any questions?
Yep, we're gonna get to that.
Okay, okay.
All right. So we've heard some, from some folks at this point. I know we received an email or two from people as well. So I know Wayne and Jonathan were involved in a call with the chamber. I know Amber was involved with the council meeting and has probably more experience than all of us with people at the park and these sorts of events to begin with. So I, I'd like to hear from council members and the employees at this point, whether it's a question, a comment, a comfort level, whatever the case may be, speak up.
Jenny, this is Rich. Before we talk, I specifically, I would like to.
This is Amber.
Hold on a second, Amber. Rich wants to speak and then we'll go to you next.
I was just suggesting, Jenny, that we, I was. I was just suggesting Ginny that we, I would like to hear from the employees and the people directly involved from the town side before any comments.
Okay. All right, back to, I think Amber, you were speaking.
Yeah, can you hear me well? I'm on my phone, so I'm trying my best.
Ginny, can you guys?
Yes. Okay, okay. Yeah, okay, so I just, I wanted to at least give the perspective from the park side. Mostly I know about COVID, the numbers, how it's affecting Marshall County. So I would like to speak just strictly outside of COVID, from a safety and security aspect. At least from our point of view, having the posse there and having eight officers at the park is, you know, a little bit more encouraging than just having absolutely no one there. So I'm definitely, if it, if it does happen, I'm certainly in favor of having eight officers there. The points of concern obviously being the boat slips, the beach and the beach lodge. From the chamber mentioned the beach lodge. But I would, if we do have an officer.
Okay Amber, I think we may have lost you or you lost your connection. So until we get Amber back, Wayne, are you still on the call? Can we hear from you?
Yeah. Can you hear me? I think I went out for the.
Yeah, you're back Amber.
For security to be placed. Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great. And then the other thing that I don't think has been touched on, just from our perspective at least, is the fact that the last drowning that did happen at the park was on the Fourth of July. In case anyone wasn't aware, that was years back. However, I do feel that there is a lot of pent up just desire for people to go out and drink since restaurants and bars have been closed. So I think that's also something we should take into consideration because alcohol was involved in that circumstance. So I guess just from our perspective, love the idea of having security there. If we have the fireworks, I would really encourage those three spots be focused on for security. But also if we could focus on just the alcohol perspective because if we can avoid a drowning, obviously I'd like to take all precautionary measures. So that's just kind of from our perspective. I'm just worried about boat slips, the beach, the beach lodge and a potential drowning, which is usually alcohol related.
Okay, thanks Amber. Wayne, can we go to you next?
Okay, I'm here. You know, Rose got ahold of me a while back. I know there's some contrary in the last email. State knows like against having it. My point is I'm, I'm preparing for something if we do it. I'll do whichever way. I have my own personal opinion about the whole thing. My concern is, is taking care like we always have in the past on any kind of event, take care of the peers, the park or people there. We at this point have no idea how many people will come or if any will come. I said, I don't want to wait to the last minute. I never said I was ever against or for it at the last meeting. I think, you know, there's concern about the whole virus thing. But I think there's a time where we have to, you know, make a decision of opening up the world up a little bit. But I talked to the chamber and I gave them the numbers. I'm currently working on getting the personnel there of eight people. Enough to cover all the peers that's connected with the park. Have people to be able to roam around if there's people, if there's a lot or few people there. Plus all the people from my department. So I think, think we're going to have, you know, 11 people running, walking around, you know. I mean, I'm, I'm just concerned, we've always been concerned about people getting on the, on the peers. So we're concerned with the boat owners and overcrowding or people trying to get on peers just to watch stuff, you know. That's always been a concern for years, years of stuff. We've always done a good job with that. I'm preparing for whatever, whatever takes place.
Okay. Hey Wayne, I have a question. Have we ever had, you know, since Grant and I moved back about 14, 15 years ago, fireworks have fallen on Lake Fest weekend and of course, Lake Fest as a, as an event in and of itself brings a lot of people to town. Have we ever had fireworks outside of the academy where it's just been promoted to this community and not been part of Lake Fest?
From other areas, I get you referred to?
No, I'm just wondering if we've had a standalone Fourth of July fireworks that didn't involve a big festival like Lake Fest?
I can't say, I can't think per se of a festival being involved. I know Waukerden's had them. I know Pretty Lake, from my understanding, is planning on doing theirs, that, you know, over that same day. But I don't have that actual information in front of me to, to say one way or another. I mean, other places have had them on the Fourth of July. How close? I guess if that answers what you're.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking about numbers in terms of people. I mean, Lake Fest is definitely a different type of event, bringing in a ton of people. I wanted to also, Jonathan, I know you're, you're on the call obviously. I know you were going to look into who in the area might be having fireworks. And you sent some information out on that. Can you fill in the council on that and any other thoughts?
Sure. What I found was that Plymouth, their Fourth of July fireworks are usually sponsored by a nonprofit. And that nonprofit basically just let the city know they were not going to do it this year. Wynona Lake and Warsaw, they are having a Fourth of July fireworks celebration. Lake Wausau Sea and North Webster and Syracuse are as well. Knox normally had an event scheduled for the Fifth of July and they canceled that one. Argus does not usually do them on the Fourth. They had an event in June that they ended up canceling. Bremen, they're not moving forward with Fourth of July, but they still do have fireworks scheduled for their August festival. And Bourbon is the same way. So a lot of the ones closest to us don't normally do a Fourth of July fireworks event anyway. And as Wayne mentioned, Pretty Lake, so it seems like if you're on a lake, they do seem to be, I think three of the four that were moving forward with them were kind of lake communities. I appreciate Amber's thoughts about the safety, trying to prevent those, any of those things from happening in the park. And I sat in on those calls with Wayne in the chamber and it sounds like, you know, if he's comfortable with that and with the size of the group that he's going to be able to get and feels like they can do a reasonable job of protecting against those safety concerns that Amber had and that we all have. It seems like he was happy with the funding they'll have available and the amount of people he'll be able to get. So if he's happy on that, I'm happy, so.
Jonathan, this is Rich, a question. Could you sort of recount your discussion with Dr. Bird at the academy?
Sure. I reached out after the council meeting and the discussion with the chamber. I guess what, what he was thinking when we last spoke was that their security team, if people did come on campus, they would just use their existing staff to ask people not to stay for the fireworks there. That their main focus at this point is, you know, trying to be ready for a healthy return to school in August. And, you know, this is, the Fourth of July fireworks at this point is not an academy event. And he said he would let me know if they had any specific requests. He was going to speak with members of his security team, but I haven't heard back from him. That was Monday that we spoke.
Hey, thanks Jonathan. Sounds like someone unmuted themselves as somebody else speaking. Okay, council, other questions or comments?
Bill Clevenger, I have a question.
Go ahead Bill.
Well, I just find this a very informative call. But I, one thing keeps going back in my mind is that it seems that the chamber and their position are kind of unwilling to even consider an alternate date. And that concerns me. I think that basically doing that, what our, our previous vote was last Tuesday, I think that there's open and room for compromise. And I think that hopefully the COVID numbers are going to be down later on in the summer. And they, they've obviously got the money to do it. I don't know why they're so dead set on July the Fourth. I'd like to see, I'd like to see if they would be willing to compromise to a later date.
Is that possible Liz, contractually?
Thanks for asking Gil, yeah, we are definitely under contract for the Fourth of July.
Okay. Is someone else speaking? We can't hear you. Okay. Bill Githens or Sally Richardi or Rich West? Any questions or comments?
Ginny, Bill Githens. My question would relate to DNR. Has an actual permit been left to have the fireworks on the lake? And do we have a copy of that permit?
I can, I think, answer that to some extent Ginny, if you want.
Sure.
Yeah, so, and also in answer to one of the questions earlier, I can account for at least a couple of the DNR calls and those were mainly just me trying to understand the process. And I, I think as someone else mentioned, that they had never in 14 years got a call about these types of things. I can probably attest to that. They weren't real clear on the process themselves. But I did get the name and apparently, I think the way it works is like Rose turns in an application. They assign a conservation officer to review that. And they did give me his contact, but he was out of the office for a couple of days. So I got a call back from another officer, but I missed it. So I didn't get a good chance to speak with them. But the person in the office, at our local conservation office over in Syracuse, basically explained it to me is when you apply, they schedule two public notices. I think one ran in the citizen or one's coming up this Thursday in the citizen and one in the pilot, if I remember right. One was last week. And then after those notices run, the conservation officer does an inspection of the event. So I assume that's, you know, reviewing the location. It's on Lake Max, speaking with the applicant to make sure they understand what the plans are and where it'll happen. And then they typically locally sign off on it and hand it over to someone in Indianapolis. And if both signatures are on the permit, the local officer and someone in the administrative office in Indianapolis, it's considered issued. And at this point, at this point from the office, she did not think it had been signed by the local officer, that he's still, I think he was going to be back in the office on the 20th and she was expecting he would review it then.
Okay, Jonathan.
Okay Jonathan, this is Bill, thanks for that, you know, update, I mean, that's great. I'm, you know, I'm in favor of having fireworks, but, you know, I'm much like Bill Clevenger in that, you know, with COVID and everything, the further we go along, the better off we could and should be. And, and my suggestion, original suggestion and recommendation was that we have an end of the summer party and do it over Labor Day. And at that point in time, the academy would be back, those kids could enjoy it like they would normally enjoy a Fourth of July, their own Fourth of July fireworks. So I'm not opposed to the fireworks being done. I just think now's a little early and particularly with DNR, if they don't sign off on it, you know, that's important to me. That's all I have.
Ginny, this is Rich. First, a comment, I don't have the exact date, but my recollection is that back in March, this idea came up to the council about having a fireworks display as some way of perhaps celebrating and having some relief. During the summer, there were some dates mentioned and I think the council thought the idea or the concept was good, but was very concerned about the COVID issues. And I think at that point in time, we had consensus among the council that it'd be best, as Bill Githens just said, to defer this until later in the summer. I think, I'm still concerned, you know, Wayne and the posse cannot police social distancing. Signs, you know, we have signs posted all over the place, reading is required and, and people don't observe what is written. I'm sure Wayne and his force can keep people off the docks and the peers, but I don't think that there's any way that they can enforce social distancing. And I think Wayne has said several times, he's not, you know, he doesn't think that that's a practical thing to do. I'm concerned that this is going to be a magnet to draw a lot of people. Even though it's not going to be published, I think word will spread quickly. And I think the park will be inundated with people. I'm concerned about the health of the community and I think that.
I think you should stay home.
Are you a town resident? Do you have a vote on this? You know, if, if people, and I appreciate Liz's analogy in terms of driving during snow, but I, I don't really think it, it carries over to, to this situation. And again, I think that, I, I think we have an obligation to the, the health and safety of our employees, the people who are going to be working there and to the, the community members who live in town. I think the fireworks idea is a good one, I just don't think the timing is correct.
Sally, I don't think we've heard from you yet. Are you on the line?
Yeah, I am. I'm torn. I would like to see the town have fireworks. I've seen unannounced supposedly, we're not going to. They are having fireworks and I've seen hundreds of people show up in a matter of a few minutes. I've also seen where, you know, we get a lot coming from the vicinity and Argus, other small towns in the, in the area around, around Culver.
Hello.
Another voice heard from.
For or against?
At any rate, this may go on for a minute. I do think that if, if they get approval for the fireworks, that we definitely have to have security and. and police in place to help with traffic control, guarding the piers. And basically just the presence there to assist and make sure it's safe. I guess if I thought that people would wear masks, I would feel better about it. But I really, I know that from people are wearing masks. And it's not that people that nervous about it should only be the ones there. That, now, I wear it to protect you, not me. And you wear, wear masks to protect me, not yourself. And I, I can see more of that occurring if you have a lot of people and you don't have social distancing. And, you know, they're all sitting there elbow to elbow, which they usually do when it comes to fireworks. So. On the one, I'd prefer to see it later in the year.
Jenny?
Yes.
Jenny, Bill Githens again. Liz said that they're under contract. Is there any way we, as a council, can ask to review, see that contract so we can review it and see what it says?
I don't know. Liz, how would the chamber feel about that?
I can't answer that without asking my, I can't answer that without asking my, my board. But I'm sure they know my, I'd have to ask them. I can't make decisions for my board.
And I'm just to read it and review it and see what it entails.
What's it matter?
Yes, I understand what you're asking. I can't make decisions for my board, but I'll definitely ask them. And I mean, myself personally, I have no problem with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess, I, I guess I would want to know that, what would be the point of it? If we see vendors, you know, engaging in a contract with the chamber for a specific date? What, what could we do about that? I mean, I, I guess, are you asking for, what do they have to pay if they back out of the contract or what?
No, I'm just asking for the terms of the contract, you know, what it all entails, what all the contract entails. You know, what services are going to be provided? And, you know, if there's anything in there that the chamber has to provide, that they're speaking on behalf of the town.
Okay.
I think.
I, I don't think there's anything on behalf of the town so much as there is a permit. You know, that the fireworks are going to be done on the lake. So I'm assuming that that involves the lake. Now granted, I'm also assuming firework contracts have, you know, some sort of, they have to provide, you know, whatever environmental safety or, you know, there, I'm sure there's things the fireworks company has to provide that even the state may require, I'm guessing, based on, you know. Is that what you're asking, Bill? That we know for a fact that this is a company that, you know, has safety measures in place and is in good faith with the state, that sort of thing?
That, and along with the fact that, you know, safety precautions and environmental precautions and, you know, who's liable if something should go wrong? I mean.
Right, I guess we've never, we've never asked for that for past events, I guess, is what I'm saying. Have we ever looked at that for like Lake Fest and that sort of thing, Jonathan?
Um, I mean, we require just the, usually that same liability.
Insurance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Typically, if someone's providing that. I'm. Whoever that person is.
Rose, we couldn't hear you, sorry.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Not really.
Not really.
Echo. Not a lot.
You got a landline handy?
Yes, I may. I think, I think what Rose is trying to explain is that the permit and the contract with Mad Bombers is covered back and forth with them and also then with the things that we needed to provide to both companies. Mad Bombers is the company that has done the other fireworks in town. And this isn't their first trip to Culver. It isn't their first trip working with the DNR. It's their business. It's what they do. And we've made sure that, we've had to make sure that all of those things are covered and that the firework company and in order to be able to even apply for the DNR permit.
Okay.
Can you hear me? Is it okay to speak?
Yes.
So first of all, I want to be the first one to formally admit that Sally, your dogs made me jump. I almost fell backwards down here. But, so, I don't want to get too preachy about all this, but, you know, I think about all this and, and I can't blame any of you for being concerned from a safety standpoint. I get it. I did it. I've lived it. We all have, business owners, chamber members. You know, we make decisions based on mitigating our risk. When I had the option to reopen the lake house, at first, I was hesitant. I knew that there is still a lot of risk out there. However, I also.
Excuse me, who's, who's speaking, please?
I'm sorry, this is Mark Timore Jr.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And Bill, I want to respond to you directly too. I thought maybe you can all see my ugly mug, but I guess everyone's on phones too, not just video. Well, so, you know, when I opened the lake house grill, I knew there was risk. But the thing is, I have 35 employees that work for me. I have 35 people that make a living. So I knew that I had to deal with that risk. I had to take precautions to help mitigate that risk so that they can earn a living. And I, and I really see a lot of crossover with all of this. I think that, I understand that people feel it's risky. I understand public safety matters to you all. I really do. I respect it. But I think that with the proper precautions, with hiring the right people, putting ourselves in position to be successful, it makes a lot of sense. And here's the reason. I believe that, and you know, contracts, I respect all that too. But the fact of the matter is, this is all about momentum. This is about the future of Culver and the chamber business members, the investors in this community, the stake, you know, stakeholders, all these things we talked about. The people that have contributed to this, there's over 80 people that have already written checks. There's countless, I mean, some of the business owners have already attested to this. There's countless people that are excited for this. To take it away from them is, it's a morale deflator. It's a, it's a huge mistake. You know, you don't want to tell investors in Culver, no, we don't want your money. Every decision, everything we've tried to do in this community for how many years? The biggest hurdle, or anybody, not just the community, but a business owner, an individual, you have a great grand idea. The thing that's in your way is funding. And this is the first time ever. That's not the problem. We have enough people that think this is a wonderful idea for this community, that they've put money in. They've written checks. They're emotionally and financially committed to doing this, display of unity. And I mean, that's what it is. It's a display of unity for a community that has done nothing but move forwards the past decade. Our momentum that we have is unbelievable. And now we've got people putting in that haven't put in the past. And I'll be honest, from a chamber, from a business owner, from a community perspective, we need them. We need them for the future. We need them to help with other events and not just chamber events, any organization events. The academy, there's a reason they're neutral. They're neutral because they know they need them. They don't want to turn their backs on people around the lake that are writing checks. That's a huge deal. So that's just how I feel. I'm happy to answer any more questions. Bill, you know, the moving, the, the, the date thing, I think it's just, it's just sending the wrong message to the community. And that's, that's my opinion.
Okay, thanks Mark. Council, any other questions for Mark or any of the chamber members or anyone else?
Hey Jenny, sorry, this is Tracy. Can I just say something or do you want to?
Sure.
Okay.
Who is this, please?
Yeah, this is Tracy Fox. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that were said early on in terms of the roads. I get a publication every day from St. Joe Hospital System. And the COU monitors the roads in all the counties, including the state of Indiana and the state of Michigan. And while the governor is back on track, certainly is tracking with the state statistics in terms of the decreased hospitalization rates and decreased infection rates. Marshall County is the top of the eight surrounding counties of acceleration rates. We double our rates in about 13 days. The next county to double rates is Elkhart County. And we are doing worse than every county around us. So I am totally 100% supportive of fireworks and celebrating. I'm also, you know, this is, this, the best way to show unity right now is to actually proceed and there's more unified approach. And also, you know, it looks like our numbers are settling down a little bit, but they're not settling. They are in other areas of the state, definitely. And I can certainly understand what the places would be, it would open up a little bit more. And I think to Amber's point, and I think Stapp mentioned this as well, that given that there are no other fireworks in the towns in Culver as well as, in the towns in Marshall County as well as Knox, this is going to spread part of the time. Like, oh, okay, the news is already out. Town gown and lake is 1,100 people and it goes to a bunch more beyond that. It's been on Facebook. I just get real concerned. And I also do agree with Bill Clevenger and Githens in terms of finding a compromise. Really like to, to see this proceed at a time when a lot of people can enjoy it. And, and I, I would hope that there may be some negotiation with the contract to see. It's just a different date. It's not a different pot of money. It's not a different amount. It's just a different date when there is more safety precautions that can be taken and just better numbers. Thanks Jenny.
Sure. Anybody else who wants to speak that we haven't heard from?
Tom Uhas.
Hi, Tom.
Hey Jenny. A couple of points. Someone mentioned that this wasn't going to be advertised. These are just observations. I'm not making a decision one way or another. I'm pretty much neutral on it. But not being advertised, look at the fury it caused just being on Town and Gown. To think this isn't going to be advertised, this is going to be on social media like crazy, especially if a lot of the surrounding communities are not going to have fireworks. It sounds like other lake communities are, but the surrounding smaller towns are not. So that's my first point. The second point is, it's the 4th of July. It's our nation's birthday. Our nation's birthday is not Labor Day weekend. My third point is, let's think about the numbers. Yes, the numbers are going up. My contention is the numbers are going up because the testing's going up. We need to know the denominator. We need to know what's the percentage of people that are being hospitalized because of this. We need to know, is the percentage going up per, per thousand tested? Or is it, is our hospitalization rate going up? So the fact that the numbers are going up, we would expect the numbers to be going up. So I have a, I, I, nobody's been able to answer that. If Tracy has an answer to that or some information, I would like to know that thing doesn't bother as much as the hospitalization rate. So those are my points of interest. Thank you.
Jenny, can I speak for a minute? Can you hear me okay? This is Tony Sellers. You know, something I asked at the last meeting that, obviously running a business and concerns of mine, obviously with a number of cases and things like that, you know, we have seen the spike and the rise. But, you know, you know, my, you know, what they don't tell us is, you know, we're not a little, I understand we can't know who, but they don't narrow it down for us. And we see places like South Bend, Elkhart, the cases are going up. So if you look at our northern counties of Marshall County, they're increasing. And, but if you look at our southern counties and, you know, Stark County, they're all remaining the same, which is who we are closer to. So, you know, you know, my question would always be, you know, are these cases going up? Because of people that live in the northern part of the county, you know, are affiliate, they're working in the RV factories where they're saying a lot of these cases are coming from. You know, we don't get that, that kind of information. And I think that, that's important to know from a, you know, I think, I think we should have the right to know that, you know, versus this, you know, I understand, you know, the, you know, people's, you know, the right to, for disclosure, whatever it is. But like, that's information that we don't get, you know, is where this, where this is at. And, but you know, if I was following the map and really watching things, that's what makes me feel better is that, you know, this stuff's, you know, it's, it's north of us. I don't know that, but I don't see that it popping up, you know, in our, in our surrounding counties. So that makes me feel better. Just an opinion. And then the other thing I would say is, you know, everybody keeps talking about, you know, if we do postpone this, we also are allowing the opportunity for, we don't know when things are going to change, but postponing this allows the opportunity for more people to hear about it, to make it a bigger event. You know, so those are also things to think about as far as, you know, putting the dates off. The dates were discussed, you know, whether we do it during Lake Fest or 4th of July. Originally, it was, it was actually, I think we were trying to do it kind of closer to a Lake Fest date. But it was more about the, the people that were donating and just talking. Is, they felt like because of the opening day, it was more of, you know, let's make this a celebration of, of this opportunity of things of change. And, you know, I talk to lots of people every day and I've definitely, all I get is when I mention to somebody on the lake about it, it's more, I always get the response, please send us an email so that we can, we can donate. We think it's a great idea. So anyways, that's just my two cents.
Okay, thank you Tony. I don't want to open another can of worms, but it's been interesting to me as a councilperson that we haven't had so much pushback on the beach, which is the only beach in the county. Plymouth has closed its pool for the summer. And it, it opens up completely on July 4th, along with water parks and amusement parks. With, of course, this recommendation for social distancing. We've not had any kind of pushback on the beachfront like we have with the fireworks. I guess the, the thing we have to address tonight is the fact that we have a special event permit filled out. And the event that DNR approves this permit and the event the chamber moves forward with their contract. And so I guess my concern is if we don't deal with having security in place or having people in place and a massive effort from the chamber to promote social distancing, promote masks, whatever it takes. My concern is that we do this without any of that. And, you know, honestly, I don't want to see us have something occur of any magnitude that would draw people to the park, including our beachfront, without having procedures and policies in place to do that the best way we can. So if that means that a permit's approved and a contract is executed, if we don't approve of a, the event form with the security in place and all the other measures to be taken, that's not going to provide public safety either. And that's just where my own head is at. And I'd be curious to see if other council members have thought about that either.
Where's the south?
Where's the south?
Pardon? Whoever spoke up, we couldn't hear you. Counsel? Bill, Rich, Sally, anyone?
This is Sally. And, you know, the worst thing that, that we could do is, is if this is approved, not have, you know, if the DNR approves the fireworks, to not have the town prepared for the traffic and number of people that would be coming to this. So in that regard, although I'd like to see it at a later date, I still think that we do need to approve their application for an event. So that we can put in place the, the needed security and police officers for traffic control.
Would that mean Sally, that we couldn't do it at a later date? Couldn't we get those people in place at a later date?
Well, you could get them at a later date, but what I'm saying is that if we have this event, Wayne has to have time to plan to actually hire people to come for that event. And if we don't approve it, you could have it where Wayne and Chad and one other person, one other officer is all that's in the whole town of Culver. And I can guarantee you that's not sufficient number to control a crowd.
If I may for once again, Sally, with all of your, with all of your experience on patrol in town, there's something else that hasn't been mentioned, and that's Lake Patrol. Lake Patrol also have that. It's not just the town officers and it's not the eight posse members that we've agreed to hire and pay for, but we also have Lake Patrol. And we've made contact with them as well. We've spoke with Anna Campbell, who is spearheading that. And
Yeah, um, can everybody hear me? I'm sorry, I'm a little, I'm a little late here.
Yes.
Okay, um, I said this in our last smaller group meeting, but Lake Patrol, as far as Lieutenant Neil Wallace, who's the head of our Lake Patrol Division, he's a Marshall County, from the Marshall County Sheriff's Department, he's on board. I called and asked him kind of explain that there was some back and forth in the town. And he, he doesn't see any, any difference than it would be any other year. What he does with Lake Fest and for Culver Academy's 4th of July fireworks typically is, he just patrols the bards or the immediate waterfront to make sure that people aren't coming into close of contact with where they're firing off the fireworks. So we, we have his blessing. We have his support. He would be the one out there. And I mean, I can give you his contact information if you don't already have it from a different channel, but, um, yeah, I mean, there's really, he doesn't see it as any different any other year from his perspective. And they'll be out all 4th of July anyways, so.
Okay, thanks Anna.
No problem.
I just wanted to respond.
Yes.
Anna, my question, Bill Giffens, my question, do you, you know, Wayne and Chad and Alex also are doing Lake Patrol. So there's, there's three people that, you know, will be wearing one uniform or the other. And that won't, you know, it's not doubling up your people. That's just a comment.
No, that's correct. And we have one other officer who is a former town employee, John Vansky, who we could try to get on board with being in the parks and being a presence there. Yeah, you're right. You're right. We have four total land patrol officers, three of which work for the town currently. So, right, but yes.
Thank you for mentioning that. Appreciate it.
Mr. Clevinger, yes?
Yes, I just want to go back to pretty much the start of this call. And I'd like to have the opportunity to express my feelings, although we haven't had a vote yet. But I'm definitely concerned about the public welfare. That and equally as important as I'm, I'm concerned as this call has gone on and we've heard members from the chamber and so forth. The lack of willing to compromise. I, I think that there's, you know, people that have donated money are not going to suddenly say, I want my money back because it's not on July 4th. I don't believe that. I, you know, they want to have fireworks. I think they're entitled to have fireworks. But my concern is, is the public safety. We've got a lot of COVID. And you know, we'd be blindfolded if we didn't think that we're just going to get overwhelmed on this. So my opinion is, and my vote would be a nay.
Rich, I don't think I've heard from you in a bit.
Ginny, I appreciate your concern about, you know, not having perhaps procedures in place if we don't approve the permit. I'm, I, I'm not sure that convinces me that we need to approve the permit to do that. I'm concerned also, I mentioned the concerns about the, the COVID issues. I'm also concerned about liability issues on this. You know, if the town approves the event request, then it has our blessing to move forward. If there are consequences or later claim, fully claimed at a later point, you know, we're going to be probably in the forefront on that. I mean, if, if the event request is approved, I guess I would, I would ask for a stipulation that the, and I don't know how questionable it is legally, but stipulation, Culver Board, both as a board representing, I'm sorry, as a board representing the chamber and personally accept any liability for future claims that may arise. And, and, you know, I don't know that they can hold the town harmless, but let them assume all the liability for this at least.
What would be the source of the liability? I'm really confused as an attorney of this talk about liability. This is not like a Trump event where you're inside and it's in a confined area and you have to sign a waiver to attend. The premise that I think you're speaking from, that would mean that someone that catches the COVID and was at the lake, even though they may not have caught it there, says, I'm suing the town because I think I got sick at the lake. I, I don't see any, I think the liability concern is just not there. I mean, the concern might be there, but I don't see any liability whatsoever. It's, you, you have to have cause and effect. You have to be able to identify that. And I don't see how that would happen in this case, in any situation. Anyone has to accept liability for anyone else.
Yeah, and I will, I will certainly for you as an attorney, I, I guess my thought on it is that if we, we suspect that this is going to be a potentially dangerous situation and still approve the permit, you know, is there negligence on our part in doing that? And, and again, I don't, I don't want to, you know, get into a legal discussion with, but I'm not qualified to do that. So.
I guess I would ask that same question then of our beachfront. You know, on July 4th, the beaches are open, not to a certain capacity level. Amusement parks, everything is wide open per governor's orders with this sort of please follow CDC guidelines. Are we supposed to implement that on our beachfront with no capacity limitations? You know, and truthfully, you could have 300 people show up in the park without the fireworks. So I guess that's the other dilemma for me is how are we distinguishing anything as of that date?
Could I ask a question of the council regarding Mike Pence? His visit during the 4th of July weekend, how much additional resources are we going to need on top of, you know, the posse for the fireworks?
We, we do not have to provide security for Mike Pence. He brings 120-some security people.
Yeah, right.
We are informed about what's going on, but you know, obviously, Secret Service stuff isn't always privy to us. So.
Reached out to local law enforcement to coordinate security and additional resources required.
Mask is taking. Pardon? Who's speaking for the minutes?
Yeah, this is Gary Perick, resident of Culver.
Okay, thank you.
Jenny, this is.
Jenny, Jenny, this is Russ Mason. Can I get in before my phone dies?
Sure.
Uh, two things. Two things. First of all, just a point that for John, Jonathan, Plymouth Speedway is having fireworks the same day, okay? I shouldn't mention that. Maybe you didn't know that, but they're having fireworks the same day. My second point is, I feel like I'm an adult. I'm a responsible person. I'm going to protect my family. And if I'm standing next to somebody who doesn't have a mask, I'm sorry, that's their problem, not mine. I'm going to make sure that my family and myself are protected. And, and if the council doesn't go along with this and doesn't pass the permit, I think you still have an obligation to protect the park as best you can. I just think if the, if the permit is issued for the fireworks, which I support, then I think you have to do reasonable effort to, you know, to make sure people aren't being nuts like climbing all over boats and things like that. As far as trying to keep them apart, you can't do that. They're all adults. They're responsible people. And if they don't want to, if they don't want to protect themselves, I think that's their problem. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you Russ. Mr. Giffens, the computer is telling me that you have your hand up. Did you have something to add?
I would just like to go ahead and call the question and ask for a vote on this. I mean, we've gone on, you know, hour and a half and we could probably go on to midnight. And I just think enough has been said to have an up or down vote and would ask for a roll call.
Can I just say one more thing real fast, please?
Sure.
Sorry, I swear I don't like the sound of my own voice. I, Bill, I just wanted to say that, you know, this is Mark, Mark DeMore Jr. again, by the way. I, I can really appreciate the concept of moving this. I do, I get it. But there is no way that is the statement that this business community and the community collectively, it's not the statement we need. You know, a lot of businesses have been licking their wounds. A lot of people have been licking their wounds. The whole point of this and the whole reason there is so much community support and support from every single business is because it's the boost we need. That's all it's about. You know, and I hate to beat that horse dead, but you know, moving it, it doesn't matter. We're, we all live here. We can watch them anytime. It's the people that come back here, that visit here, that are part-time residents here, those are the ones that we need to make a statement with. So we can keep them continuing to contribute to this community on a beneficial level. That is a huge deal to get their investment in this community financially and emotionally. So thank you for your time, by the way, everyone.
Madam President, will you call the question?
Thank you, Mark.
Ginny, can I say one more thing?
Who's this?
Ginny, this is Angie at Legacy.
Okay.
Um, just, I just got just a couple of comments. At this point, I, I, there's, there's obviously very, you know, many different views on, you know, what we're trying to be safe about. I mean, it was just stated, I mean, that, that, you know, vice president's bringing 150 people into the community. I see nothing but out-of-state license plates every single day, everywhere I drive in the town currently. And we're about to have almost 800 students come back here in a matter of just a couple of weeks. They're going to start coming back for sports, as I know the public school's opening for sports this very next week. I think that at this point, it's about personal protection. It's not about whether we can tell people they can go outside or they can't go outside or they can't view some fireworks. I think that I, I look at the community as you guys are amazing at always keeping us safe. And I think the best thing that we can do is exactly what Amber asked us to do is protect the park and keep the, the equipment and things like that and the peers safe. But I think at this point, it really is a personal choice if people are going to come and view the fireworks and whether they're going to personally protect themselves. Especially with the amount of people that have been coming to the town and actually decided to quarantine themselves in the town. That's just my opinion, but thank you for listening.
Okay, thanks Angie. So council, obviously you're ready to move forward. Is there a motion on the floor from anyone on the council?
Ginny, when I spoke, I actually was attempting to make a motion that we approve the event.
Okay, that, that was Sally to approve the permit, the special event form. Sally, is that where you're motioning?
Yes.
Okay, so Sally's made the motion to approve the special event form. Is there a second or discussion? Okay, is there another motion?
I moved that we postponed, we postponed the, the decision until a later date.
Is there a second or discussion on that motion?
Ginny, this is Bill Giffens. You know, I would like to amend that, that, you know, it would seriously be considered to be moved to Labor Day weekend.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, I don't object to that Ginny. And I would second that.
So I guess my question is, are you suggesting that the, I think what you're really saying is not to approve the special event form at this time.
That is correct.
The, the date on that form has nothing to do with Labor Day.
Okay.
Right.
So could you please amend your motion?
I'll defer my motion to Mr. Giffens. Ginny?
Well.
Go ahead, Bill Giffens.
I was going to say, if Sally's motion didn't get a second, it, it just dies. Because her motion was to approve the special events. Is that not correct?
Her motion was to approve the special event form.
For?
As it stands, as it stands now, which is a July 4th date.
Right. And if there's not a second, it just dies for a lack of a second.
Yes, none of you seconded.
Right. And I'm fine with that.
Okay, so what is your motion then?
Just dies. And there is not, there's not another motion before us.
Okay, does anyone else have a motion on the special event request?
Does, does Bill have a motion on the floor?
No, sir.
No, he doesn't.
All right. Clevinger moves, but we deny the special permit.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Bill Giffens, I will second.
Okay, roll call Karen.
Mr. Clevinger?
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
I'm a nay.
Ms. Ratcherty?
Um, nay.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Okay. Um, so at this point, we have not accepted the special event form. And, um, I don't know what that implies as far as, uh, DNR would go or moving forward with the current date and event. Um, I do think that if this is going to move forward, um, we have another council meeting before the 4th. Uh, I guess, again, my concern is, are we going to have anything in place if this occurs? Um, does anybody else have this concern?
Well, basically, I have the same concern.
Yes.
I as well, Karen Heim.
Yeah. Jenny, this is Rich. I, I share the concerns, but I don't, um, I don't agree with passing the event request to get the concern addressed.
To get what?
I don't agree with passing the special event request to have the concern pressed.
Uh, Jenny Monroe?
Yes.
Um, I shouldn't be cutting in on all of this, but, uh, this is Mark DeMore Sr.
Hi, Mark.
Uh, I've heard all of this. I've heard it and heard it and heard it over again and over again. Um, I love all the people that you guys are, I love everybody that's been talking. You guys have a lot of great concerns, including my son does, including you, including Bill Clevenger. Uh, you know, I support all you guys. I have been a member of the Chamber of Commerce for 22 years. I don't have to explain what I've been or what I'm gonna be. This is disgraceful. This is outrageous. I am in support of this 200%. To move this forward is ridiculous. Guys, we have the best chief of police. I understand, and I don't know all the details. I might be talking out of text here. You guys have got to move forward. We need to have the fireworks. I've done the fireworks for Lake Fest for three years. It's very safe. Wayne Bean has got this under control. If I have to put more money into this thing, I will put it all in to make sure that it's all safe. There is no safety concerns. You guys have got to be positive. Stop the negative statements. I, I am appalled by the way this is going. You guys have got to stop. I do not want chaos in Culver. I want it to be safe. It's the beautiful thing on the lake. I love it. I love everybody that's talked, and they love me. Guys, we are going forward with the fireworks. Sally, you've said all great stuff. I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor of whatever you guys decide, but please do not be negative. If I have to die from Corona, that's, it is what it is. Stop it. Everybody's got to stop. We need to protect ourselves. Wayne Bean will protect that whole scenario at the park. You've got, you guys have great points. I love it. Bill Githens, great points. I love Bill. I support Bill with everything he says. But you guys are wrong. We're going to make this positive. We're going forward. God, I hope I don't sound like Donald Trump. God damn it. That's horrible. But anyway, we are going to do this, and we're going to go forward. Whatever I gotta do to make this happen, let's make the posse bigger. We got the money. Culver, I've been here for 22 years. I'm going to die here. And I'm going to die if we don't have the fireworks. We are going to do this. Stop the madness. Please, please, I love you guys. Whatever I gotta do, let's do it.
So I got.
Let's go. Let's go.
My question to the council is, if the chamber is moving forward with their plans, their contract, the DNR permit, um, currently as now on July 4th, the park, the beach, everything is open. Uh, so I guess my question is, are, are we sending a message to Wayne that he's not to be involved? Or are we sending a message?
Messages, we're gonna, we're gonna get, we're gonna, Wayne Bean's gonna get the posse. We're gonna, we're gonna go forward with this. The message is, we're gonna do this. We're gonna do this as a chamber. We're gonna do this. We're going forward. We're gonna do this. But we want all you guys' support. We want everybody to be confident, positive. We are going to do this in a safe manner.
Jenny, will you take control of the meeting, please?
Yeah, I, I get it. I get that, Mark. I think that the council has denied. Yeah, I, I understand. Uh, but I, the council has denied the request form. Um, so my concern as a council member is if this does go forward, um, we still need our emergency services on alert. Uh, but I want to know.
Whatever you guys gotta do, whatever you guys gotta do, let's do it.
Please control the meeting.
Yeah, I don't have control over silencing anybody. I'm sorry.
Well, I've never been silenced. I'm not trying to be, uh, corruption. I'm, I'm just saying, let's, let's get positive. That's all.
Yeah.
Jenny, I make a motion to adjourn.
Who's this? Who's that?
Bill Clevenger.
Oh, Bill. Yeah, Bill, I love.
Jonathan, are you still on the call?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm, I'm muting Mark DeMore right now.
Okay. Sorry. Um, okay, so, yeah, I, Bill, my concern is separate from Mr. DeMore's opinion. Uh, I, I do feel though, as if, if we're moving forward, if, if the chamber moves forward, uh, with the, the DNR permit and fireworks occur on the lake, um, which it can be perfectly acceptable to them, um, what position are we in in terms of alerting our emergency services?
Jenny, this is Bill Githens, and I agree with you. I think we do need to, to at least alert emergency services and be prepared.
And, you know, Wayne's in an awkward position because he's involved in Lake Patrol as well as, um, you know, obviously, um, he's a consultant to anyone doing any event in the town of Culver. Um, and, you know, I would not want him silenced, um, in terms of that involvement, uh, if anything moves forward. I don't care if it's in the middle of the lake or on the lakeshore. Um, we can't just assume that we don't have some responsibility for emergency services at all times in the town. So, I guess that's my question. How do you want to deal with that?
Well, I think we move forward, uh, with that, Jenny. Uh, and, and secondly, just because what we, uh, what, uh, the motion was on the floor and, and, uh, it, it doesn't necessarily mean that there won't be fireworks because we don't know whether we're going to have any weight at all with the DNR. Um, you know, they could say, well, thanks very much and move on and, and, uh, you know, do what, uh, you know, they proceed to do. So, um, but I think that, you know, we have to, we have to take into consideration about emergency services and, uh, um, I guess it's, it's, it's a matter of the money, uh, it seems to me. Um, is that kind of where you're coming from, Jenny?
Well, that's kind of where I've been coming from the whole time is, um, you know, a, an event can occur through permit on that lake, um, that is going to bring people to the shores, whether we want them to come or not. And, you know, my concern is if, if there are fireworks going off, people are going to come out to watch them, period. Uh, whether we want those to go off or not, and I get that some of you don't want that to occur, but it's gonna occur if, uh, the, the lake, if this happens on the lake. And this wouldn't necessarily just be the chamber. Anyone can put fireworks off on the lake if they have a permit. And we've seen it happen numerous years in a row. I see fireworks on the lake. Um, they're not as grand as the ones that take place in the middle of the lake that get paid big, bigger money for, but, um, so, you know, I obviously have a concern about there being security around, and Amber has that concern as well. So, you know, if this is approved, what are we doing about it?
Jenny, this is Rich. I mean, I would suggest the, the area of the town that is most directly affected by this is the park. And I think, um, our charge to Wayne is to take whatever steps are necessary and the other, the MS services, um, to assure that, that he's providing as much, um, manpower and security as is necessary. And if, um, you know, if the town has to pay for that, then the town has to pay for that. If we can build the, the chamber for it and they're willing to, to pay for those services, fine. Um, but the services have to be, the safety has to be taken into account, and I think we have, we're obligated to provide it.
I guess that's why I saw this as the reason we allow them to provide that and to pay for that, which was part of their event permit was to do that. Uh, that was what they were agreeing to do is provide a posse. I don't want to agree to, you know, pay 11 officers, uh, but I, I feel like that's the position we're in now. And I guess I'm asking you, are you prepared to pay for that? Because I think Wayne needs to hire people regardless of if that DNR permit goes through.
Jenny, I, I, I would make a motion that we go ahead and pay.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay. Roll call, Karen?
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Ms. Ratcherty?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
Okay, thank you, Karen.
Who made the second one? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Karen.
Who seconded the motion?
I did, Karen. Rich.
Rich did.
Okay, so Wayne, I think, I think the message is if DNR approves the permit, we're going to be responsible for making sure there's security in the park.
I got it.
Okay. Anything else from the council?
Bill Githens, I move for, I move, we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Clevenger seconds.
Uh, roll call, Karen?
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Ms. Ratcherty?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
Okay, thanks, Karen. All right, I'm.
Jenny did a good job. This is Gil. You did a good job. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Toppling to Marshall.
Yeah, thank you very much. And thanks for everyone for being.